That's a really good one. Yeah, I love bean soup. How about you, Hector? We're gonna favorite soup?
So.
Any soup?
Me too.
Yeah. How about you, Anna? Yeah, just whatever comes out of the pot. Yeah, I'm a pea soup fan myself. And I love making it. Oh, I'm recording myself here. That's the whole town now knows it'll be on Facebook. Pretty soon it'll be on Facebook and it will be about how much I love Hungarian mushroom soup. Or or clam chowder, anything but the reality. Um, I was, I was told that you, you may have resigned from, from council today. Um, the Tony Boom, the reporter from RB Times said, so is it two openings that are on two openings? And I'm like, no, it's just one. Take a closer look at the packet that that particular announcement is from 1945. The packet has like an example notification from like two years ago or something.
Oh, yeah.
Tony wanted me to know if Dave Prestizo was also stepping down. I think it's been the seat number. Yeah. Yeah.
Hey, we found out who's what everybody's favorite soup was tonight for what?
You hold it down.
I just love soup so much.
Yeah, that's why you have to be careful to drop some misinformation so that it can be put on Facebook and everybody will know. Yeah. So what's your favorite soup, Dave? Really? That's interesting. Yeah, cuz she wants to know what, what your favorites are so she can cook them for you?
Well, that or, you know, what looks better.
Yeah, I.
I mean, the answer is always depends.
Yeah.
I love, I love a lot of different soups, that's for sure. Um, all right. We have a quorum at this point, and I thought that councillor Namrav, yep, she's on. She was gonna join us by wait a minute, does that mean she's on or is that just? Yeah, so she said she was, oh, there she is. She's gonna join us by Zoom. So you have will she be able to will she be able to participate from where she's at?
She should be. I just asked for councillor Penomaroff to unmute herself. Councillor, can you unmute yourself?
I'll text her and see if.
She nodded and said, yeah.
Okay. Do you have, do you have her on the screen? Can you see her?
Yeah, she's chatting.
Okay, I see her, yeah.
Councillor, can you hear us?
Thank you, Hector. So when you unmuted me the first time, I then remuted myself, but then I couldn't unmute myself again. I remuted myself out of habit. So do I have to stay unmuted this whole time?
No.
So if I mute myself, will it let me? And I'm sorry I'm not there. I'm not, I'm a little under the weather. Not gonna talk about soup, not feeling great.
Okay, thank you, Eleanor. Um, I, you know, not feeling well. Thank you for joining us. And if, if you decide that it's, it gets tiresome, please, please don't hesitate to we've got a forum at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah, that wasn't for you, Dave. Um, with that, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order of the Talent Urban Renewal Agency, February 21st. Roll call, please.
Councillor Penomaroff?
Here.
Councillor Greider?
Here.
Councillor Prestizo?
Here.
Councillor Byers?
Here.
Councillor Vice Chair Paramiller?
Here.
And Chair Ayersfled?
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is called, let's see, speakers heard on non-agenda item. Hector, are there any speaker request forms?
For Tura.
Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. There is no items on the consent calendar tonight. Item 4.1 is items from the executive director, Gary.
And Chairman, members of the board, I have on the agenda, three proposed support letters for grant applications that we're in the product process of preparing. Like to briefly talk about each one of those. I've prepared a draft support letter for each of them. Then following that, I'd just like to provide information on the status of the peer grant application.
Very good.
So the first letter is a support letter for a funding request through Senator Wyden and Senator Merkley's office. Uh, this is the discretionary funding program. Forgot what the, the title seems to keep changing of the program. Uh, but it is basically a, a grant request that goes through the congressional office rather than the agency. Uh, and the members of Congress, senators and House members put together a, a list of projects that they forward to the various committees and the, the revenue and taxation committees for consideration to insert into the budget bill or the, the variety of budget bills as they kind of go through the congressional process. So this used to be a pretty common practice years ago. I would say maybe 10 or 11 years ago, the practice ceased. Because they, it just got kind of a bad name. Because some of the requests kind of got large publicity. I think the most famous one was the Bridge to Nowhere in Alaska. Uh, so they, uh, terminated this program under a previous congressional leadership. And now it has returned in a slightly different form. It's a little more formal. So there are three proposals that we're working on. One is a proposal for $2 million that would come to the city for the purchase, purpose of replacing the city's asphalt cement. Or excuse me, asbestos cement, water pipe system throughout town. About 30% of the piping in town is, uh, thought to be AC pipe. Um, between 20 and 30%. Uh, that pipe is probably 50 years old. AC pipe came into popularity in the 1930s. It was the predominant method of piping for water systems in the mid to late 1950s through the 1970s. A lot of that pipe is all over the country, is, uh, beyond or reaching its life cycle now. We experience a lot of breaks in AC pipe in town. It's difficult to deal with because of the asbestos mix of asbestos fibers in the pipe. So when our public works employees cut into the pipe to, uh, disassemble brakes and put things back together, they have to wear special protective gear and take precautions because they're handling a hazardous material. Uh, and the debris also requires special handling. So the AC pipe is now at an age where it's considered somewhat unreliable. It gets more brittle with age. Uh, so we're putting it, putting in a request for $2 million on an estimated total cost of 2.3 million. This would have a benefit also in discretion of rates down the line because this is a project that ordinarily would be covered in the in the, in the water rate over a period of years. So if this was approved, it would have some effect on the city's water rates easing the increases that might be coming down the line. Uh, so far, we have a letter of support from the Oregon Health Authority. Uh, and I'm expecting a letter of support tomorrow from, um, Fire District Five. Uh, we need at least one more. There's one on the agenda tonight from the Urban Renewal Agency. The more letters of support, the better. The minimum is three. So that's that project. Any questions on that project? Oh, yeah, the pipe is safe. If it's not broken, though. It's not a, not a has, not considered a hazardous material when it's intact.
Question?
Uh, councillor, member Penomaroff?
Thank you. Um, so for letters of support, have you thought to ask Medford Water Commission? Um, would they be likely to give you some of that?
I, I, I've tried to reach out to the Medford Water Commission and haven't been able to reach their, the appropriate staff person there.
Okay.
I'll continue to do that. We have until Friday to gather these letters up. Some of the agencies take a while to get into the process to get their governing boards to approve, uh, letters, so. We're still continuing to get a letter from Medford Water.
Okay, great. Well, I just want to say, um, well done as far as, uh, asking for this money. It'd be very useful to get.
Next one is for town hall improvements. Uh, this would be a $600,000 ask for rehabilitation of the town hall. We're indicating in our application that the town hall is used for multiple purposes, not just council meetings and commission meetings, but is also used by, uh, uh, the, uh, Talent Business Alliance and by Access and by other organizations. Uh, now it's more limited because of its condition. Uh, we're noting in the application that we have a a structural engineering report that expresses concerns about the condition of the building and actually recommends that we not have the building in active use during snowstorms and during periods of high wind. Uh, so there is, there is a somewhat urgent need to take care of the structural issues with the building. Uh, we have a, uh, letter of support from, from George.
Kramer?
Yeah. Uh, and we need, I, I'm working on an additional letter or two. So it looks like we'll make the minimum of three, but, um, that's a, that's a basic outline of, of the project. We haven't gone into detail in the application as to what would actually take place. We're just giving a kind of a broad estimate. Of what the cost might be, yeah.
Uh, councillor, member Byers?
Would it be helpful to, who are the people, who are the entities that you've received the letters of support from for this project?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you.
Who are the entities that you've received, um, letters of support from for this project?
Uh, I've requested a letter of support from a local historical society group through TESSA. Is working on trying to acquire that. And I've requested a letter of support from the Talent Business Alliance.
Okay, great.
Sorry to make it our three.
Any, any, any questions on this one?
The last.
Sorry, just one question. This is, these are due by Friday as well?
What was that?
These are due by, you need these all by Friday? Gary?
All by Friday?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great.
The application deadline is Sunday. But it would be nice to get it in by Friday.
Thanks.
Although, although we will all be working on some. Final one is a new, a new one that came up sort of the last minute. Uh, there's a program in the federal government called the Community Disaster Loan Program. Uh, and I have written applications for that program in the past that were successful. Uh, what that program is, is that it's, it's a, it's funded through FEMA. It's typically not funded in the federal budget. It's kind of used as a spot program for these kinds of requests. Uh, and the original intent was to provide a vehicle for the federal government to, to um, flow money to local agencies that have been adversely affected in a disaster and have had a severe impact to their tax base. So that the local agencies could continue operations through a loan program until their tax base recovers. And at some point, uh, those agencies could then apply to have their, their loan forgiven. I was able to secure such a loan and ultimately a grant, not for a city, but for a public utility. A railroad. Uh, and, yeah, it worked out quite well. Um, so I, I looked at how can we make an argument for for this, uh, this program? And the city has about $4.3 million in existing debt, all in the waterfront. Uh, and that, of course, also has an impact on rates going forward. There are a couple of balloon payments coming up in the next few years. So it occurred to me that it might be an attractive project for the legislative leadership to sort of, sort of replace that loan, which is a consolidated loan from several different years and programs with this 50-year of 1% interest loan through the Community Disaster Loan Program, and then in a few years go back to them and, uh, request forgiveness of all or part of it. I, I also, I also added on here something that I doubt they'll approve, but it would be a, a $2 million standby line of credit that the city could access in the event that we have, um, a continuing lack of revenue. It's a concern I have is, is how fast is the city going to recover its property tax base? Property tax revenue typically lags new construction by maybe a couple of years. Uh, you know, I, I think we're recovering, um, but just to have that standing by would be, uh, I think somewhat of a comfort. Even if we never used hopefully we'd never use it. I'm not sure they'll go for that, but sometimes you gotta be creative and see what happens. So that one, I'm, um, I'm really needing additional letters of support. So those are the three that I have on tonight. Uh, and, uh, uh, I've asked that you authorize the executive director to sign letters of support for all three of those.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
Well, I need a motion, member Byers?
I move to authorize the executive director to sign letters of support for the grants outlined on behalf of the Tura, um, board.
Second, we have a motion and a second authorize the executive director to sign letters of support on behalf of the Tura board. Is there any discussion? Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh. Oh, did you get Penomaroff? Yeah. Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. Item number five on the agenda is items from chair or board members. Any items from chair or board? Oh, I'm sorry, you wanted to go to peer funding?
Yeah, I wanted to mention that the peer, uh, grant application was, uh, is, you know, being reviewed now by the uh, by the committee, and they've next meet on March 7. Uh, so far, they have received one public comment. And I'd like to distribute that to the board members this evening. Sorry, that didn't help you. Uh, and I, I also found today with the mayor, mayor's health, uh, a comments that were submitted by, uh, members of the committee. It's very hard to read. But, um, it's a little small. But it basically, uh, it's the, when you look at that list, it's the longest comment. Well, it basically talks about the need to address, uh, climate change issues better, uh, to address the transition of the current residents from the site. Uh, and I'll be working with Tom to prepare, I'm free, to prepare response to that. Uh, to those comments.
This one is, sorry, this one is comments from the committee that's reviewing.
Many members.
I, I believe those are the comments from OHCS.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, which is the state agency that's overseeing, um, all of the HUD funding coming through. You know, one thing I did want to point out, and I may have said it in our meeting the other day, is from reading this, I got the impression that maybe this like arm of OHCS doesn't doesn't have as much detail on, um, on the transitional
Yeah.
housing project. Um, it, it really, I, it read like, um, they didn't understand how, um, transitional the housing is. And, um, uh, the irony, of course, is that a, almost, uh, a, a large, a large part of the funding for that did come from OHCS, but I'm suspecting that it's from a different department of OHCS.
Yeah, when you read that one little piece there that talks about the residents of the mobile home park of, of the trailer park being displaced.
Yeah.
One might interpret that as thinking that they are permanent residents there.
Yep.
And which is not the case. So we'll, we'll need to, I think, revise and clarify.
And so I think, um, reaching out to Julie at OHCS. I think we have the contact information if you need it. We can forward it to you. And maybe just giving, uh, I, I'd be happy to join you on that conversation because I was actually part of some of the original conversations with OHCS about, we were just about to go to RFP on the um, community-led vision for that property, the mixed use. We were just about to go to RFP. We were starting to design one when the fire happened. And I was in some of the earlier discussions with OHCS about ceasing, um, ceasing that project in order to have transitional housing, um, there. And um, so if it's helpful, I have a little bit of a history that I could join you on that conversation.
That'd be great. Uh, the public comment period is open until the last day of this month. So there may be additional comments coming.
Uh, uh, member Greider?
And you have a meeting with Access?
Yes.
And you have a meeting with Access at the end of this month?
This coming next week. Good.
Let the sirens go by. All right, any additional updates? Here comes the trap. Sorry, I have to look at Pulse Point. It's just. Oh, it's a structure fire on Foss. That's unfortunate.
The address is?
Yes, it is thirteen eighty-nine.
That's pretty far down.
Yeah, that's too bad. Um. All right. Were there additional comment or, uh, reporting for the peer funding?
Uh, the, the comment period goes to the end of the month.
Okay.
But I hard to say. Usually comments come in at early.
Okay. Um, so the comment period, uh, goes to the end of the month if anybody didn't hear that. Um, all right, uh, so then with that, we'll go ahead and move on to items from the Chair or Board Members. Anybody have anything? Uh, Member Byers?
Um, acting in an unofficial liaising capacity between, uh, Tura and Colosso in Puerto Lessa. I do want to just make Tura Board Members aware of the fact that one of the mobile home parks that we were anticipating residents of the gateway to be able to move to Royal Oaks is not going to be habitable anytime soon for the foreseeable future.
Is that because of the trailers?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So, um, I know that, uh, in leadership meetings, we've discussed letting residents in the gateway know about timeline and just being really clear about communicating the process and where things will be and, um, because it's, there's even fewer options for them to relocate to. I think it's really important that we be very communicative in what's going on. Um, so folks can make their plans.
It would be good. Uh, thank you, by the way, uh, Member Byers, for your leadership, uh, in those discussions. And I'm, I'm just wondering if, you know, in our, uh, weekly meetings that we can start to talk about formulating a communication plan, I'm really to kind of get you up to speed on, on who the players are and who the contacts are and and how frequently we probably need to be doing outreach now that that resource is offline.
Mm-hmm.
There's probably some good information from Rogue Action Center as well, huh, Nicole?
Yeah, we've been, yeah, I mean, we've been trying
Yeah.
to
I just think it'd be worth.
Come up with, yeah, but we actually als- also, um, had it on our radar to try to reach out to Access and just be sure that they are really aware of, because they, I know they've been very busy and just want to make sure that they are really aware of the situation and just because we talk with them pretty regularly.
That's great. Is anybody, is anybody aware of, um, anybody convening like a roundtable discussion about kind of like measuring where we're at and is there any, um, regional discussions about that, Member Greider?
At this point, they're not really. The LTRG was hosting some of those, um, with multiple organizations, but there's been a big focus now on, um, the resiliency grants that are coming out, and there's a network that's been meeting with, which has involved access and a lot of those key players. So, um, no, and that's why we wanted to make sure they're aware that it will be urgent soon.
I think that might be a good discussion to lead perhaps at some point in time, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, very good.
Question?
Uh, yep, Member Penomaroff?
Thank you. Um, I'm also, I'm wondering if, um, Counselor Greider or Byers knows about, uh, whether Renaissance Flats um, is a viable option for folks or the mayor, because you were there at the opening, um, uh, for, for folks coming from the gateway. I know it's, it's a little bit different, kind of. It's not subsidized. It's just kind of reduced rents. Um, at least that's the way it was explained to me. I'm just wondering if that's, um, is that a pathway forward for, uh, those folks at all?
I can tell you what I know. Uh, when they, uh, had the event there, um, I did get to talk to, um, the, uh, what's the name of the, um, uh, with, of the, uh, of the, um, developing.
Fortified?
Uh, I think it's Commonwealth. Yes, it's Commonwealth and
Commonwealth.
M Marsh and, um, and then Leadership from OHCS and Access, and they all said that, um, they are, um, processing applications from the gateway. Um, but it, I know that it's a part of the discussion that Gary's going to have at, with Access at the end of, did you say the month? The end of the month?
Next week.
Next week. So, um, that'll be part of the update that we get from Access, like just actual numbers and um, but yeah, I was assured, um, at that event that, that applications were being processed.
Good news. Great, thank you.
Right. The next item on the agenda is anything else from Board Members? Before I move, um, written communications, there are none. And so with that, we'll adjourn the meeting at six thirty-one and reconvene for Council at six forty-five.